All right, ladies and gentlemen, this time we will call our work session January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Jamie, could you please read the sunshine statement?
Be advised that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner. Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jenny?
Here.
Ms. Pareo?
Here.
Mr. Lyon?
Here.
Mr. Burrow?
Here. Thank you, Jamie. First up, we have our minutes for approval. I need a motion for the minutes for the August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one closed session meeting.
Motion, Lynn.
In a second, please.
I'll second Marlo Smith.
Thank you, Marlo. Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Next up is a motion approving the minutes from September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, action and work session meeting.
Motion.
Right.
A second, please.
Second, Virginia.
Virginia. And Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Abstain.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, motion carries, minutes approved. Jamie, before we get moving, there's, I think Jim is on, see me associates. I know he called me, said he was gonna come.
Okay.
You mind just letting him in? Let me know when you're okay with that before I begin. While you do that, we have our consent agenda, which includes resolution two thousand twenty-two. I'll read all the resolutions within. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two, approving the raffle license six zero four for the Holy Cross Prep Academy. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-three, authorizing the township of Delran, county of Burlington, through the Delran Township Police Department to participate in the Defense Logistics Agency Law Enforcement Support Office one zero three three program to enable the Delran Township Police to request and acquire access of the Department of Defense equipment. Is there any objections to the items within the consent agenda as a whole? All right, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the resolutions within the consent agenda, please.
So moved, Tom Lyon.
I'll second.
Marlo, second. Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, motions within the consent agenda or adopted, other resolutions, I should say. And next up, we have our motions. The motion authorizing the payment of bills, including all purchases made on the cooperative purchasing agreement.
Motion.
I'll make them.
Uh, and Lynn, you want, Marlo, you want a second, great?
I'll second, yes.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Next up, we have a motion accepting the report of the CFO, including December year-to-date revenue report, year-to-date budget report, and December check register. Can you get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Next up, I need a motion appointing Robert Lockter to the green team for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second, Tom Lyon. I don't know if there's a difference, but his last name is spelled wrong on our agenda.
And the correct spelling, Lynn?
I believe it's W A C H T E R, Lockter.
Lockter, that's the correct pronunciation. I'll get Jamie's correct spelling. Sorry, Robert, if you're wrong with us. But I know he will do great on the green team, so hopefully we can approve him and appoint him. Jamie, could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. Congratulations, Rob. I know you do great work on the green team. Next up, we have a motion to appoint Jack Moore to the zoning board as a regular member for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Jack is, for the record, an alternate moving up to a regular member position for his service. Great work on, at the zoning board. Get a motion in a second, please.
I'll make a motion, Marlo Smith.
Thanks, Marlo. Second, please.
Motion, a second?
Second, great. Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Congratulations to Jack. And next up, we are in our work session portion of the agenda. So first, let me just pull this up, is our snow removal agreement with Burlington County. My pages are double sided, so one second. But this is a standard agreement that we enter in every year. I don't think, you know, Jamie, unless you have anything else to add, but I mean, we do this every year. It's just so they can handle the roads that we share with them, and everyone gets reimbursed at the end of the day. We do this every year. Is there any questions from members of council? Okay, great. Jamie, do you want to put this on the public meeting?
Yeah, the resolution to approve the agreement will be on for the public meeting in February.
Okay, great. Thank you. And moving right along, number two is the two thousand twenty-two recycling and solid waste agreement. I love these when these are contracts that we do every year, just like the previous. We do this every year. It's in order for us, you know, to get rid of our solid waste and work with the county, the DEP. Is there any questions with this? Another standard issued one. So Jamie, this will also be on the public meeting?
Correct.
Okay. And next, we have a agreement. Number three is a brine agreement with Mount Holly Township. They plan to purchase some brine from us. I don't think this is the first time we've entered agreement with them, but we have done this before for neighboring communities. Yeah, we enter in with other neighboring communities to buy salt and things of that sorts as well. So sort of common occurrence here around. Is there any questions from members of council? Everybody good with that? And Jamie, I think we'll put that on the public as well?
Yeah, we'll send it to Mount Holly for them to review, and then, once they approve it, we'll approve it, and then, you know, have the mayor execute it.
Okay, great. Awesome. I think we entered in a grant with sentiments and before for that, right? Remember, someone locally?
Yeah.
Right down the road. Okay, great. Next, another one, we're hitting home runs tonight. Next, we have an authorization for the aerial mosquito control, which is again, another standard thing we do with the county. We do this every year as well. We had some background information. Is there any questions and comments from council? Nope. Okay, Jamie, public meeting, right?
Um, this doesn't really require, this just requires the mayor's signature. Just wanted to make sure there wasn't any issues with it, but if you're all okay with it, we'll just get the mayor to sign it.
Yep, not a problem. And then they always, for the public, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, they always notify the residents who will be affected by this on their website, I believe on our website as well, right? If there's any sprays and things of that nature. Pretty sure that's always notified. The other thing, before we wrap up our work session portion and go into close, we have to walk on a request to waive fees associated with the Oprah request. Going to defer to Jamie and Jen, who's with us tonight, Sal, had a scheduling conflict. So there was a request. Jamie, can you just give us a quick update of what the request is for the record?
Sure. This was a request for a video from the Carley Lloyd event, and I was advised that we would have to send this out to have the juveniles redact, it faces redacted. I spoke with Jen and Sal about this, and we reached out to a, to a company that I guess provides these services. Maybe Jen can give us a better explanation, but, um, you know, it can be upwards of several hundred dollars for these. I think we'd have to be reviewed by the attorney first, and then we provide them certain information. But, um, you know, we've had the request for the township to waive those fees. We would usually, um, you know, put those fees on to the requister, but we've had a request in this instance to redact the fees. So I'm just bringing it forward to council to discuss, or to waive the fees, sorry.
Yes, yes, to waive the fees. So Jen, you provided, I've asked for a memo on this to make sure we're doing everything on the up and up. You just want to give us a brief elevator pitch. I mean, we've all had the memo.
But. I don't want to, you know, read it verbatim for you guys, but it just is, so far, as far as the courts go, and as far as the, you know, government records council in New Jersey goes, no one's been specific about having to redact minors' faces, but there is a heightened concern about getting, uh, releasing minors' personal identifier information, which there's nothing more personally, I, personal than their face. You know, if it's just an adult, that's something different, but these minors are under eighteen, and they can't sign off on letting these things go out on their own. Um, I mean, that's just the gist of why you would have to go through and redact these juvenile spaces. It's not, we're not trying to make it difficult by any means. And when Jamie was talking about, um, you know, the company, there is a company that we have used in the past that we have reached out for, reached out to for other Oprah requests in Delran, too, and they're very reasonable about what they charge, but it's a long video. There's lots of faces in it. It's gonna take a lot of time. And as far as the fee goes, that's a, whatever decision you guys make on that is a policy decision for you. There's no legal reason for you to waive it or not waive it, but either way, these, the minor spaces have to come out, and these waivers are on a case-by-case basis for you guys. And if it's going to set up a, a situation where we're going to be having more of these Oprah requests that requires such a level of redaction, that's just something you guys are gonna have to, you know, take into consideration when you think about waiving these fees. I don't think there's probably a lot of other videos out there. I don't know how many videos we have as a municipality, but that's also why there's not a whole lot to go on as far as, you know, precedent in court or the GRC, because not a lot of municipalities have these big videos or photos or whatever that have, you know, juveniles in them. And if they do, no one has asked for them in Oprah or it just hasn't become an issue.
Yeah, and I think it's important to note for the record that we're not waiving any fees. Jamie explained, right, it has to be reviewed by an attorney to determine what would be redacted. And then there's also the fee for the production service, right? We're only, the only part that would be waived would be the portion of, um, the service, right, that would do the redaction. The township handles the cost of the Oprah request with respect to the attorney review. That goes for every Oprah, Oprah request we have.
Correct.
Is the law, and we follow it completely, but you know, there is, um, it does require attorneys to make sure we're following it the right way. And, you know, Jen has gone through a lot of Oprah requests in the last couple of months, but, you know, that's a cost that we have to deal with here. So, you know, the question moving forward is just, we have Jen and Sal's recommendation regarding redacting the faces, right? So the question is, what's council's thought on the waiver of that redaction service? Now, Jamie mentioned, we don't know the price yet because it depends on the scope of the redactions, but it could be a couple hundred dollars, right, Jamie?
Yes.
Okay. What are the thoughts from members of council?
Well, I think, uh, council president, I believe we should just be consistent. I don't think it's a matter of what the cost is. I think it's a matter of being consistent with our policies. Ms. Eggers has said, you know, the person requesting or the organization requesting the, um, video would have to pay for that redaction. I think we should just be consistent and say the same.
Great, thanks, Lynn. Any other thoughts from members of council?
I'm fine with sticking with what Lynn said, that if it's, uh, something that needs to be above and beyond a normal Oprah request, and there's a cost to it, that they can bear that cost.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, and just this, you know, the third that, you know, my thought is that, you know, the request itself was, you know, completed. So we, as a, you know, a township, we provided the information that was requested. Anything additional above and beyond that, yeah, I think that's a cost that the township should not bear.
Yeah. Yeah, the question is, you know, they're waiting to complete it with, with the redaction, so that would fulfill the Oprah request. So, I mean, I think we have to, I see Virginia nodding as well, some of council members' comments. You know, I think we have to stick with that. You know, the thing we learn in law school is about slippery slope. Once you start to do it for everybody, you know, where's, where do you draw the line? I think without any other further information about the circumstance, right, we have to take what we have as, as the written request and move forward with that. So seeing that council is in, you know, would like to not waive the, the redaction fees, so the party, the operating party would have, would be responsible for those. Jamie, is there a vote needed for that, or do you just need, like a motion?
Um, maybe that's a question for Jen. I.
Yeah, Jen, I'm sorry, Jen, would.
Okay, um, if you want to do a vote on it, just so you guys solidify it, I don't know how specific you guys want to get in it.
You can do a motion. That's, that's, that's fine, right? You okay with that, Jamie? We'll do a.
Yeah.
Just, we definitely should put something on the record. We'll do a motion. Do you have the, let me just see, is there an identifier for the Oprah request, Jamie? I don't know if you provided it.
I don't.
Number or no?
Um, I mean, I do have a number. If you give me one second, I can probably pull it up. Um. It is twenty-one dash two twenty-three. That's the request number?
Twenty-one dash two twenty-three?
Two twenty-three, yes.
Okay. So with respect to that, this is a motion to not waive the fees associated with the redaction of video footage for Oprah request two one dash two two three. Could you get a motion in a second, and then we'll do a roll call?
So moved, Tom Lyon.
A second.
I'll second, Marlo.
Marlo. Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Jenny?
Aye.
Ms. Pareo?
Aye.
Mr. Lyon?
Aye.
Mr. Burrow?
Aye. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you, Jamie and Jen, for your diligence on that. And Jamie, that's it. We don't, there's nothing else to walk on, correct?
Correct.
My notes are up to date. Perfect. We will now go to our reports before going into executive session. First up, we have reports from our clerk, Jamie Eggers. Jamie, good to have you back, too, as well.
Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight.
Great, thanks, Jamie. Next up, from our mayor, Mayor Katrin Boe. Mayor?
Thank, thank you, council president. So as many of you know, we've had quite a lot of activity for the last two months and quite a lot of discussion regarding the Carley Lloyd event. So it's very difficult to prove a negative, and after so much time, last week, I stated on social media that I would just no longer sit by and watch as I, my family, this council, our staff, our volunteers, and various other Delran residents were being accused of unfounded actions. So I said, I'm so completely sure that nothing was done illegally or unethically, that in the planning or execution of this event, that I contacted the Comptroller's Office in the state of New Jersey and the local finance ethics board for the state of New Jersey. And I look forward to complying with the audit that I personally requested on events of this type. I will continue to update the residents as to the progress of that, those two audits. I'm waiting to hear back from both of them, and right now, I'm, I'm waiting for responses from the Comptroller's Office and the local finance board of ethics in Trenton. And the second and final item on my report, and, and certainly much more importantly, is that our Delran family suffered a tragic loss of one of our own children. There is nothing that we can say to console the friends and classmates and family, and especially the parents of that young man. However, I would like to extend the condolences on behalf of myself, of this council, and the entire Delran community for your loss, and just assure those folks that we will be here for anything they need. That's my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Next up, we have from our solicitor's office, Jennifer McPeak. Jen, anything for public?
I just have one thing for you guys. The, we were contacted by the planning board professionals. They're looking to just expand, basically amend Delran's code right now that regards drive-throughs and standalone drive-throughs and things of that nature. So there will be an amendment to that ordinance to amend that coming your way, probably the end of this week, early next week. So just keep an eye out for that. But that's all I have for you guys tonight.
Is that an amendment, a policy decision for council, or is that just for this project?
It's regarding the ordinance in general. They want to just fill out, when it was passed, it was, the portion they're looking at is from like the seventies or the eighties, and it's just very general, like four points, and they just want to fill it out a little bit.
Not a problem. Great. You'll get that to us, or the chair of the planning board. Okay, great. Thank you. Next up, we have from our engineer, see me and associates, Jim Winkowski. Jim, thanks for joining us. It's been a while. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. Hi, everybody. Thank you for your appointment, and happy new year. I haven't seen you since the new year. There's not much to report. There hasn't been much activity going on with our capital projects, with the weather and holidays, and they finished bulk of the work, you know, the end of last year. There's some punchless work to do on the, the two different road projects, which the, you know, which are, you know, we're working with them on. Looks like we'll have to wait a couple months for the winter weather that's finally upon us to, to, to warm up again. Other than that, we've been working on the twenty-twenty-two road list, doing some estimates, and then I'll be able to present that to you, hopefully at a workshop in, in the near future. And Virginia, I did get an email from you later this evening. I will report back on the updated schedule on PSCG on Chester Avenue. They should, they're doing the work on the, at the intersections now. That means if you're just tying in the, the new main to the, the existing main, so they should be nearing completion on that, that work, and then it will go on standstill until they're ready to resurface Chester, either this spring or, or early summer. So, but I'll get you, I'll email you and the council on, and so, and most being on the website, so everybody gets updated on their schedule.
Great. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. And the other thing, Jim, you mentioned to me a couple hours ago, council will, hopefully at our next meeting or the meeting after that, take a look at our road program. We got to start those discussions and select some roads. So I know Jim has been working with our administration and public works to kind of narrow out our list, right, of priority lists. So we'll see that in a couple days, couple weeks, and council can begin those discussions.
Yes, yes.
Awesome. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Anything else? Are you all good?
Uh, that's it. Listen, if anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for Jim, while we have him? From any members of council? Nope. Okay, great. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Next up, we have our reports from members of council. So first up, we'll start Councilwoman Virginia Pareo. Councilwoman?
Yeah, my report was regarding Chester Avenue. Jim just said he'll get back to me. So when he gets back to me, I'll be able to come back with the report. That's it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilwoman. Next up, we have Councilman Marlo Smith. Councilman?
Yeah, just, uh, well, we're in the January, and there's constantly, you know, threats of bad weather. When we do have that, please look out for your neighbors, you know, and I have a couple older neighbors myself, so I always try to make sure I can help them out whenever I can, whether it be cleaning off the car, warming it up for them, doing little things like that. So just make sure you're, you know, being a kind neighbor during these, uh, these tough, these tough weather events. End of report.
Well said. Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Lynn Jenny. Lynn?
Uh, I have no report this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Appreciate it. And next up, we have a vice president of council, Tom Lyon. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you. Condolences to the family of the young person that we lost in town. Tragic to lose any young, young youngster like that. Also, I'd like to say thank you to the Delran defenders, which make up a lot of our emergency service and police for letting me join their team to raise money for Special Olympics. We did so down at the Polar Bear Plunge in Wildwood on Saturday. It was sunny and seventy, not, but it was a really good time, and that's a great group of people, and I, I really enjoyed getting to know them better and whatnot, and we, we all had a good time, raised a lot of money. That's my report. Thank you.
It's great news. Thanks, Tom. And for my report, just echo sentiments of my council members. Other than that, I have no report. So we will now go into public comments. I'll ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment.
I'm.
I'll, Marlo, Marlo, you can take it. And Virginia, can you second real quick?
I'll second.
Okay, great. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Our floor is now open to public comment. So for the members of public who would wish to speak, please raise your hand. We're virtually, so there's a feature on Zoom to do that, and you will be recognized. At that time, you may approach your computer and state your name and address for the record. All remarks should be directed through the council. All individual speakers will be allotted five minutes of time, and all statements are part of the public record that is both written and video recorded, and cannot be redacted or retracted after the fact. So with that, I'll wait for some hands to be raised. And Barbara Littleton, Jamie, do you mind adding her? Can you hear us, Littleton?
I can.
And we can hear you. Yes.
Great. Um, I, I also want to give my condolences to the family of the child that has passed away. That, that's always a sad thing to happen. Um, I, I do want to talk a little bit tonight. I, I have a question. I guess there was an Oprah request for the video, um, and, uh, now we're, the township's saying that it needs to get redacted. Um, so I'm a little bit confused, I think, because I understand the whole minor thing, but I know I saw that, that presentation on the news. So I'm not sure why the faces need to be redacted. Could someone speak to that?
Yeah, the, Jen, you're more than willing to jump in, but the difference is that the news is a media company that has different statutes that govern than we do. It's a completely different body who took the video. So if someone were to call the news and ask them for the production of the video, they would not have to redact it. They're not confined by the Oprah statute. On the other hand, it's, it's a government record that we have the video, so we have to fall under the umbrella of Oprah, as Jen mentioned before. Jen, is that, is that an accurate assessment?
Yeah, everything you said is true. If, if, since we as a government entity own the video, it's our video, we took the video, we have to follow this standard of care to protect the personal information and identifiers of residents and anyone in the video, specifically those juvenile spaces. Whereas the, the news organizations are private companies that don't have to follow those same regulations.
So I guess I have another question on that. How, how in the heck would you know the difference between a juvenile and, and an adult in that video?
That's gonna be a part of our review. I, I mean, there's gonna be the obvious ones, but that's another hurdle we're gonna have to get over at some point, but we've got to be able to start the review of the video before we move forward, because, before we move forward and send it to someone to redact it.
All right. I was just curious about that. So, um, some other questions that I have, I know that there's a contract out there for the communications director. Um, I was thinking that that was on the agenda to talk about tonight. Did I miss that?
No, you did not. That's in an executive session, that, along with the appointment of an interim administrator, because it has to do with contract negotiations. So the discussion will be enclosed, but any action will be taken outside of the executive session.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just have some questions, because I, I guess a couple of Oprah requests have requested information on that, uh, that position. Um, and I see that the, the agreement is, is effective January first of two thousand twenty-one, and it's good for twelve months, but it wasn't dated until May of two thousand twenty-one. What happened there?
In, I'm not sure what agreement you're talking about.
Um, the consulting service. Um, the consulting services agreement, um, with Wendy Mitchell.
For, for what year? We haven't awarded this year's contract yet.
Right. This would be for last year. So this is January first of twenty-twenty-one and the contract is out there. Um, but it wasn't date, uh, it wasn't signed until May. So that was like five months later. Um, what happened with that? Why, why did we have a contract so late after she was supposed to be doing her duties?
Um, I, I wouldn't characterize it as that. The, the issue was, um, there was no money budgeted for that position uh, at the time, January first, when everyone took office. So, uh, we had to wait till the budget cycle to then make the appointment. And I guess the, uh, contract had that start, you know, it was for the whole year. So they picked January first to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, but there was no work performed, um, before that because there wasn't a, um, you know, there wasn't any money to be paid at that point. There wasn't a, a budget approved.
So the payment that was made.
Um, Ms. Littleton, you have thirty seconds. If you could wrap it up for the five-minute mark.
Oh, shoot. Yeah, not a problem. Um, yeah. So the payment that was made to her on five twenty-seven, because the contract says the payments will be done quarterly after work is performed. So what you just told me is she didn't do any work, but then seven days after the contract was signed, she was paid four thousand dollars. So I, I'm sort of kind of confused.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to speak to the workshop. Mayor, can you speak to that?
I, I can help easily.
Yeah, that's not something that I'm a part of the administration.
She started working potentially for free if the contract wasn't awarded, uh, starting in the beginning of January. So she was working the whole time. But, uh, you know, if, if it was decided that she wasn't awarded the contract, it would have been a gift uh, to the township. As it turns out, uh, the contract was awarded and she was paid for the work that she did.
Okay. Um, real quick, one other question on this, since my time is running out. I've got a lot more questions on so many things. Um, but, um, so one of the documents that is out there that was done through an Oprah request is a NS, uh, NJSA fifty-six, uh, colon, one dash two. And I guess that's a, a business where she identified a business and she signed that. And I compared the signature from that document to the signature on this agreement and they're nowhere similar. Is the council aware of that?
No, that's the first time I'm hearing that. I, I'd be glad to take a look at it if you send it to me. I'm.
Yeah, I, I can definitely send it to you. I mean,
and, and.
These are the types of questions that I'm having. When I look at these documents and I am going to take more of an active role in, in reviewing things from, from the township, because I'm paying a lot of taxes. Um, so I, I definitely want to bring that to your attention and I'll send that to you.
Thank you. I appreciate, please, please do. Your time, we're, we're kind of past the time, but
Yep.
I, I, I understand. I understand you have a lot of questions. You're more than willing. My information's online and more than willing to sit down and answer your questions, whether it be in person or on a call. I don't want you to feel like you're not uh, having, you know, getting the answers you deserve. Uh, more than happy to talk if, if you do have any questions. Okay?
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For everyone, for your time.
Yep, thank you. Um, Jamie, next, if you, um, looks like next is Mr. Duff. If you could please allow him into the room. Uh, Mr. Duff, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Yeah, um, real quick, uh, just to the, to the video, I'd like to ask, uh, Ms. McPeak, Jennifer McPeak. Uh, is she aware that there are dozens of emails, at least four or five actually, where the township sends out pictures of these children to the New York Times, to South Jersey Magazine, to all these different media sources, that the township shared images of children with the media. The media didn't take the pictures. The township shared the images. So I wanted to uh, find out what's different between that and, uh, what I'm asking for.
Mr. Duff, the, there would be nothing different had, first of all, I don't, I don't know which pictures specifically, but I can't go back and tell them how to fix something that's already happened. But moving forward, council and the whole municipality is going to have to abide by Oprah and these guidelines and, yeah, requirements to redact personal identifiers. There's, there's nothing I can do to change anything that has happened. If it has, has gone out.
Can you ident, can you identify any case law on this?
There was, I don't have the, you know, memo in front of me, but the issue at the moment is videos with children and things of that nature are just a, a new problem just coming up in the world and the statute.
That's ridiculous.
What? The statute itself.
Jen, Jen, just, just save, save. It's Doe versus Poriz, uh, one-four.
Can you hold my time while you, while you state this? Cause, cause you, you, you cut Barbara's time while you guys, guys answered questions. Can I, I, let me just.
You're more than, Mr. Duff, Mr. Duff.
I want to be real clear.
Mr. Duff, Mr. Duff.
You guys, you guys just voted, you voted to not, uh, to pay a hu, a couple hundred dollars for this video to be redacted when there is absolutely no reason for the video to be redacted. The township themselves supplied pictures to the media. Uh, Ms. McPeak is now trying to say that what you did was unethical, that what you did was illegal by supplying those pictures. Is that true, Ms. McPeak?
I can't speak to what happened because I don't know specifically.
But, Mr. Duff, can you, Mr. Duff, you're just complaining that we're taking the balance of your time. So the time is yours. You can use it as you wish. You have two minutes and thirty seconds left.
So, so you're staying, so by the way, you're not going to pay for the couple hundred dollars for the redaction, but you are going to pay for the lawsuit because a hundred percent I'm suing the township based on this video. You know that, right? I mean, you're, you can't even state, what's the case law actually? Can you state the case for the record?
Sure, it's Doe versus Doe versus, uh, Poriz, P-O-R-I-Z, P-R-I-T-Z. Uh, the reporter is one forty-two, New Jersey one, located at page eight, published nineteen ninety-five.
And what was, what was the, what was the, the case? What was that? Well, no, what was the, the, the parameters of the case? Was it, was it about an Oprah request?
In video? Yes, yes.
Good. So, so, so very, very quickly. So I want to go back for a second. Let, the mayor had mentioned that he put a, a, um, a statement out saying he's going to get himself investigated by the state, uh, and that he did nothing unethical. But last week, the council president said you acted unethically, said that he would not hire your nephew. Okay, so that, that you acted unethically. So the, the state doesn't have to say it. I don't have to say it. The council president said it. So Mayor, in your, in your statement, you forgot to mention that. Isn't that true?
You have one minute, Mr. Duff.
What the council president said, was it talking about a difference in ethics? He did not, he did not accuse me of that, of, uh, having done something unethical. He said that perhaps our ethics were different, but that's as far as he went.
I believe he said it wasn't illegal, but it wasn't ethical. Uh, because he said that the council would not have hired go events again if they knew the same facts they knew today. So in closing, very quickly, I'm going to make sure that you really understand this. This, this vote that you took on this video and the unnecessary redactions that you're going to, uh, you know, say are needed for a video, when you sent out pictures to the New York Times and to other newspapers who have requested pictures from the township. Now, if you did that and you acted illegally, well, all those people should sue you, right? But if not, you should release the video. It doesn't make any sense why you're not releasing the video. The only reason you're not releasing the video is because the party was a bust. Mayor, you claimed thousands of people showed up, didn't you?
Mr. Duff, you have ten seconds.
How many people showed up?
Wrap it up.
Can somebody tell me, you were all there on the stage holding hands. How many people showed up that day?
The estimate I heard was thousands.
Fat, like how many thousands?
I, I don't know. Couple thousand.
Well, release the video so people can see. Release the videos.
Stop your time and expire.
I assure you, I'm going to assure you that, that township is going to get a lawsuit. An Oprah lawsuit. So this is a violation. This Oprah request is two months old. It was filed November fifteenth.
All right, Mr. Duff, your time has expired. Okay, wrap it up. Please, thank you.
Yeah, and, and, and in closing, just the, the, the final thing to say is, um, Council President, if you think, uh, the mayor acted unethically in hiring go events, do you think the mayor acted in, in unethical and an illegal way in, in going to the Dunphy property and taking pictures? And also, um, showing up, uh, and, and, and going well beyond his job duties as mayor to take pictures of the property? You think that was, uh, unethical and, and legal action by the mayor?
Mr. Duff, I, all I understand is your allegations based on that. I'm not aware of who took the pictures or what happened with that. Uh, I'm not going to comment on.
The mayor admitted to taking pi- pictures, Tyler.
That, that's, that's what he did then, and I'm not going to comment on.
So was that, is that unethical? Was that ethical of him to do?
It is not. It is not.
You admit it.
I have no, Mr. Duff, your time has expired though.
Mayor, did you admit that it's unethical?
No, it is not unethical.
To go and take pictures of their property like you did?
All right, Mr. Duff, your, your time has expired. I'm sorry, Mr. Duff.
Wow.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please raise your hand. Last call. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion. Someone speaking, I'll ask for a motion to close the floor to public comment.
So move, Tom Lyon.
Second, Lynn Jenny.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Those opposed, motion carries. We are out of our public comment. For the record, I want to make clear, if there was anything that was done, you know, wrong about Oprah in the past, or there's any issues with redaction in the past, as Jen artfully put, uh, that's an issue for the past. We have to take the advice that we get from our Solicitor's Office and apply that to the facts that are in front of us. Um, by no means is this some sort of grand scheme, uh, to prevent some video from being released. I've never seen their video. I'm sure it's, it's the same thing we've all witnessed at the event. It just recorded at the front of the stage. Uh, and, you know, there's children associated with that. We're going to follow the advice of our attorney and get that, get that fixed. All right. So, uh, with that, I'll ask for a motion to, uh, to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-four. That's authorizing executive session to discuss contract negotiations for the appointment of the communications director, contract negotiations uh, with respect to the appointment of an interim business administrator forward slash recruitment service. It's going to get a motion in a second.
Motion. Lynn Jenny.
And a second, please.
I'll second.
Marlo. Uh, Jamie, could you call the rolls?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell.
Hi, the eyes have it. Resolution carries. We will now go into executive session. Uh, for the members of the public joining us, uh, we will be back in this session, um, after our executive session to take any public action, if there is to be public action to be taken. So if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. We'll be back hopefully in short order. For members of council, the, uh, executive session Zoom link was sent around or the numbers. So we'll see you there. Jamie, uh, I think Marlo is in the public room. Says Virginia, Jamie. You don't mind. Virginia, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, Jamie, are you good to record?
Yes, I'm recording.
We're live. Okay.
Yep.
Great. We're back in our public session after our work session. Now I'm going to take two actions. The first is resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-five, pointing appointment of Wendy Mitchell Consulting as Communications Director. I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Tom Lyon.
Second. Go ahead, Virginia.
Virginia will have it. Uh, Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi, the eyes have it. The motion carries resolutions adopted. Next up, we have resolution two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-six. That's a wording contract for the interim business administrator and recruits to Government Strategies Group. Could you get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lyon?
Hi.
Mr. Burrell?
Hi, the eyes have it. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted. And that concludes our public meeting. So with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Tom Lyon.
Next, Tom, a second.
Lynn Jenny.
And thank, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.